And we are back with the League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County Candidate Forum. We're helping you inform yourselves before the August 26th primary election, and now we want to meet the candidates for St. Lucie County School Board District 3. We have Jeremy Tyson, Donna Mills, and Mark Young. And let's start with the opening statements. Mr. Tyson?
Well, good morning, and thank you guys for having us. I appreciate the League of Women Voters putting this forum on. A little bit about my background before I go into why I'm running for office. I'm a proud graduate of the University of Florida. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration, and I'm also a proud graduate of Nova Southeastern University where I have an MBA with a concentration in finance. So when it comes time to look at the budget, rest assured, I have the experience that it takes to analyze the budget and look for funding as needed. But the reason I'm running for school board is to end the culture of complacency that's permeated the district where average is acceptable. This is quite evident by the school board's motto of cruising to excellence. Now, I know many of the viewers and some people in the audience that have ever achieved excellence have never cruised there. It takes hard work, but more importantly, it takes making tough decisions. It takes courage to stand up for our children. What we need is real leadership, not feel-good words and cute little catchphrases. We need someone that has a plan to maintain and sustain student achievement. My plan is quite simple. First, I want to empower principals and teachers to make the decisions and allocate those resources at the school level. Secondly, we need to switch to a boundary system. There's two counties in the state of Florida that use a zone system, and we're, to be quite honest, it's antiquated. We need a boundary system that will increase neighborhood schools and parental involvement, which will lead to increased graduation rates. We need to reduce transportation costs and drive that money back into the schools closest to the students. Now, we need a district that gives all students the opportunity to succeed, not just based on what city you live in or what school you attend. I know there isn't a silver bullet to fixing our education system, but electing me to serve the community is the first of many steps to get our system back on track to ensure every student gets the best education possible.
Thank you, Mr. Tyson. Opening statement, Donna Mills.
I'm Donna Mills. I want to first thank the League of Women Voters also for having this forum. I think it's very important that we as candidates are before the public, and the public can hear from each of us. It's called democracy, and I appreciate democracy. After having said that, I was elected in 2010 and have served on the school board. Actually, it's been about three and a half years. We haven't completed our four years yet, and I have been very active, have absolutely loved my position. I'm a community activist and advocate. For over 30 years, I have been in this community, and all 30 years, I have worked with people. I have cared about humanity, and especially the children of St. Lucie County. My husband is a native here, graduated from Fort Pierce Central. All of my children have gone to schools in St. Lucie County, at public schools, and have graduated. I have the experience of a mom. I have an experience of a teacher. As a mom, I have not only raised my own, only my four from birth, but I have raised, also had an opportunity to raise six foster care boys. And last night, we were at a meeting, and if you, those that were there, noticed that there were a lot of young men in my T-shirts that were helping in the campaign. These are young men who grew up in our work here in this community, who we have turned around their lives, and there were about 10 of them there, and they are now men. Some of them are in their late 30s, and they are giving back to their community now because of our work over 30 years in this community. I am a proven leader as a school board member. Well, before I even get to that, as a community activist, we established churches in this community. We have established preschools. We've established schools. I had a school up to eighth grade at one point, and these were-
And we'll hear more in just a moment.
Okay.
That that's our time for the opening statements.
All right, thank you.
Let's move on to Mark Young.
Hi, my name is Mark Young. I am a 16-year resident of St. Lucie County. During my time here, I have served as a youth minister at First United Methodist Church in Fort Pierce. I've started another church here in town after that, Surfside Church. I am a licensed foster parent, have been doing that since March of last year. Very integrated in the community, serving in different existing community organizations in order to be able to just add manpower, add help, and whatever can be done there. Serving on the St. Lucie County School Board, that's why I'm running. I'm running as another way to serve our community. A story that has inspired me in this is that there's a friend of mine whose whole passion was to be a teacher. He worked at a large big-box home improvement store, and he did that to put himself through school in order to get the bachelor's degree, in order to get the teaching certificate that he needed in order to be able to come in and begin to teach. He went to teach, and in his first year of teaching, through the evaluation program and through all the poor pay he was receiving and not being treated as a professional that he is, he wound up saying, you know, I can make more money and do other things, and he's back into driving a truck now in order to be able to make the ends meet for his family. I believe that our teachers are professionals, our teachers are well-trained, our teachers went to school for this, and they have, are passionate about this, and so for that, I'm running to serve them. I'm running to serve teachers, to empower them to be able to be the professionals that they are and have control over their classrooms, empower the parents to be able to have voice and feedback to the district and to the teachers and to the classroom, and empower the staff. I'm also running for financial transparency so that people can plainly see the income streams that come into the district, where they go, how they're spent, where and where it all heads to, so that if there's questions that come up, you can look for yourself and see what's happening. And I'm also running for local control of our schools. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today.
Okay, well, let's start the first question. We're going to rotate the start of them. We'll start with Donna Mills. How will you ensure transparency in the district's finances, ensuring that the public can clearly see where dollars are spent?
I think that's very important. I mentioned transparency, I believe, earlier, that the public can see everything that's going on within our district, our school district. I believe that we should have our budget laid out on our website, you know? I think that everyone can, should be able to go on and see every detail of the budget, as well as being able to come in, and they can do that, come in at any time, the public can come in, sit down, and ask to see the budget. And these things that our public should take advantage of, so that you can have that transparency. We currently have people throughout the community who are our financial committee, and they come in, and each board member chooses their own person to come in and represent them from the community. So this is a, this is a way, but it's a smaller group. I believe that we need to make sure that if our, if they, if someone hits our website, they can go right to the page and it breaks down everything in the budget.
Okay.
Well, the, you know, the budget is listed on the website. You just have to do some digging to find it and get to the proper links to pull things up. However, the budget is not interpreted very easily for folks to be able to look at it and say, okay, here's where the money's coming in, where is it coming in from, and then how's it being spent to where it finally gets to the bottom. So I would, I would say that we would need to look at the existing resource that's there, but let's improve it. Let's bring it into layman's terms. Let's take a look at, okay, if someone's coming in who's not a CPR or an accountant, who doesn't understand debit credits and all these other things and how they go, let's actually put it out in plain English, plain language, plain math to say, here's the total sum coming in from all the different sources that are coming in, and here's where it's going out, going out, going out, to where we get down to the bottom. And particularly point out what is being paid to teachers, and that's one area where we could break it out a little bit more. What's paid to administration? What's paid to teachers? And maybe what step are the different teachers at and say, okay, how many teachers are at this step, and how much is being paid at this step? How many teachers at this step? How much is being paid here? And let's look at how much total money is going to our teachers versus how much total money is going into administration, into transportation, into all the other things, facilities and all those other areas. But just to break it down so that people can look at it plainly and see it plainly.
Okay. Mr. Tyson, transparency in finances.
Great question, and I appreciate Mrs. Mills' answer, and I think Mr. Young hit the nail on the head. Yes, the budget is on the website, if you know how to look at it. They have a general budget, then they have budgets for every other program that's involved in the county, in the community. It's very difficult to read. I do agree, we need some sort of wrap-up to where we can say, yes, this is our income, and this is where we get the money from, but also at the time, this is where we're spending the money. I am, I'm a, I'd like to see more transparency as far as administrative salaries and instructional and non-instructional staff, because I think it's important that the, that the community knows where their tax dollars are being spent. The school board and the school district is the highest line item on your tax bill, and my question to every single viewer and every single community member is, are you getting the value out of our school district? And it's not my opinion, it's, the facts are there. We're not. Our district is a C district. We're average. I don't accept that. My plans will, will bring sustainable student achievement, but directly relating to the, to the finance side, I'd be in full favor of a community auditing board and have a separate entity from the community of volunteers that understand the budget and can hold the board accountable for utilizing the resources that are given to them by the federal, state, and local governments.
Okay. Well, next question, I'll start with Mr. Young. What is the best and worst of our school district?
The best of our school district is our teachers. They have passion. They want to teach. The worst of it is, is the structure that keeps them from letting that passion loose. There's a whole structure that is like micromanaging the classroom. You have to be at a certain place at a certain time, doing certain things a certain way. We let the teachers teach. Just remove that, and we can do that as board members. We can step back where there's state mandates. We can say, well, let's push back on this a little bit. Let's let our voice be heard so that our teachers can manage their classrooms, our teachers can bring forth all of the creativity that they had that called them into teaching in the first place, and let the best of our district loose and let them become the teachers that they are and not hold them back. And then, because if we hold back our teachers, if we have this top-level, let's dictate down to what you're doing, and let's dictate every little thing that you do, it removes the passion, it removes the desire, it removes the professionalism, and it starts to just dumb everything down to a constant layer of the same thing. Pull that barrier out, get it out of the way, so that our best and our brightest can flourish. And when that happens, our students take off, because they see the whole culture change. They see the teachers inspiring them. They see the teachers inspired in their workplace, and then the students start to respond to that and come up, and the entire district starts to rise even higher than what it is currently. So those, those would be my best and my worst that I would put in there.
Okay. Mr. Tyson, best and worst.
I think the best part of our, of our school system is our students and our teachers. I think it's two-sided there. I think we need to empower our principals and the teachers, because these are the individuals that know our students and that see our students on a daily basis. They know better than anyone sitting on the school board what it takes to inspire their children. They see them on a daily basis. When we, as a district and as a school board members, as they push policy down, and a top-down management style in education has proven ineffective and inefficient. That's the system we currently have. We have a top-down management system, and it needs to come more from the bottom up. When we empower teachers to inspire our children, we need to give them the responsibility but also hold them accountable. Secondly, I think the worst part about, the worst of the district is the perception in the community that our district is, is not as good as our surrounding counties. What we need to do to change that is start reaching out to businesses and start mentorship and internship programs that really put our students in the face of the community. So now the community can see how good and great our students are and the educations that they're receiving in our public school system really is effective. Once we let the community see our students working in the, in the community through these mentorships, through these internships, that's when the community perception will change, I believe, and obviously the graduation rates will go up. But we owe it to our community to do better.
Okay. Donna Mills, the best and worst of our school district?
The best of our school district is that, is our children and our teachers as well. I believe that our school district is doing very well at helping those children who are self-motivated, who have stable homes, or who are doing well academically. And we have all type of programs for those children so that they can excel. Our IB program, our dual enrollment program, and we need to continue that. It's a wonderful system as far as pushing children along that are at a certain level of learning. The worst of our school district, I believe, is not addressing the needs of the other children who are not doing well in school, who are not making the grade, who are falling behind, who are having social problems and having discipline problems. And we need to, I think as a school system, we have thought so much in a box, and what we need to do is come out of that box in order to strengthen our district and our students and our teachers. Conduct and disciplinary problems have been outrageous in some classrooms. Our teachers need help as a district in, in working with these children. I've developed in the last year and a half three different programs to address that need, and, and very excited about these projects. I have a mentoring program. I have a speakers bureau going on, and I also have a minority women's calendar that's coming out this year. These are all areas to help with the social, emotional component of these children, to get them to be self-motivated, to become like the children who are excelling. And we have to deal with their self-esteem, we have to deal with their environment, we have to change the way that they're thinking in regard to even wanting to learn.
Okay, thank you. First question next to Mr. Tyson. What do you feel as an individual you could do to make a difference in helping students achieve academic success?
You know, as a school board, we're a working board. There's five people on the board. Individually, my commitment is, is to the school district and the community. As the next school board member, I, I will make it my, my career, and I will be involved in schools as much as the principal will allow it. I think it's, it's an integral part of being a school board member, to know your community and know the students that are, that are, that were empowered with teaching and educating and inspiring. I think as an individual and as a, as a board member, I would put forth policy that, that reflects my beliefs as far as empowering the teachers and the principals. I think, you know, we need to address things like, like Mrs. Mills brought up, and as far as discipline in the school, and I think as an individual, there's, the most I could do is give the power back to those that, that deserve it and that need it, and that's the teachers and the principals that are in the schools on a daily basis, doing their job. And that's my answer.
Okay. Ms. Mills, as an individual, what do you do to help students achieve academic success?
As I just briefly touched on it earlier with the other question, we need to start acting and doing things a little differently to address those children's needs who we want to bring up and academically and bring success to them as well. We are no stronger than our weakest link. And so as a school district, we need to go and, and think differently about some things. There's a definition about if you keep doing the same thing over and over again, it's the definition of insanity, so if it's not working. So we need to bring in surefire stuff that work. One of the things that I've done, because many of our children are being brought up now in single-parent homes, and many of them missing a father in that household. So I have brought men from this community who are being an asset to our community and bringing them in on the high school level to speak to the ninth graders. And every week, I've had a different male come in, and you can hear a pen drop. And what these men do is they come in and they give their story to the kids. What I like to see is helping our children become motive, self-motivated, to inspire to learn. And so when these men come in and they talk about their challenges in life and what it was like for them when they grew up as a child and so forth, I think Ms. Harley mentioned about that emotional and that social component that is so important in a child's life toward academic success. The children are absolutely amazed to hear the stories and the challenges that these men, who look like they've never had any problem in the world, coming in and sharing. We also have what we call life classes at one of our K-8 schools, where we have a group of men again come in, and they work with disciplinary, children who have had, are having disciplinary problems, as well as academics. So I believe that in order for us to increase that, we need to make sure that we look at other programs that are successful and bring them into the district, and then monitor to ensure that those programs will help all of our children.
Okay, thank you. Same question to Mr. Young.
Okay. Well, as an individual, I'd say I'm doing it by running for school board, another way to serve. By running for school board, then, I am on a board of four other individuals, and in that, I can lead the conversation on how do we begin to remove these barriers? How do we begin to do things, initiate new things for our students to be able to rise in their achievement? One of the new things, we have to talk about this as a board back and forth, one and another. I wonder, are you happy with where you've been after four years of conversation so far? Are things where we need to be? We're talking about as an individual, how can we do it? Have we seen the change that we want in the last four, four years? So you come forward, I would, as an individual, present these things in open board meetings to start initiating conversation. Let's talk back and forth. Since we have sunshine laws, we have to do everything out in the open, let's start talking about how we can remove the barriers to student success. And one of the things that I think that a conversation we need to have is we're very worried about, and it's rightly so, we don't want to set our students up to fail. We don't want to set them up to fail. We're very concerned about, well, if the standards are too high, then if the students can't reach them. But the thing about it is, is one of the ways the matrix works is if you set high standards and have high support, you have growth. If you set low standards and have low support, you have stagnation. If you set high standards with no support, you have retreat and backing up away from it. It's time for us to have high standards with high support, and I would lead that dialogue, and I would do what we can to remove the barriers, to bring around a school system that has very high support for teachers, very high support for students and staff, and at the same time, very high standards, so the entire learning environment improves and increases. And it starts with me running for school board right now to begin to begin that change and be able to begin that dialogue with the other members of the board.
Okay. Next question starts with Donna Mills. There has been a lengthy and controversial debate nationally on Common Core. What do you think it was meant to do? Do you or do you not think it's a good idea?
Uh, Common Core, I believe, was meant to put all of our children on the same level as far as educating them, being exposed to the same type of education material and, and being on the same, everybody being on the same page, basically. And that is, and it, and also to get our children to think more analytically, to get our children to think less of so much of the facts, but that they're able to explain the reasons why things happen. I do not support Common Core. And the reason why is because even though I myself, I have very high expectations of children. At my preschool, I had my preschoolers reading before they left me. That's how high my expectations are. I gave them a very firm academic foundation, and the parents were amazed, and I had total parent support. But with the Common Core, as I've looked at the different examples of exam questions, I have seen just outrageous stuff that they're asking first graders, second graders, that are way beyond the developmental of their mind at that point in time. And so I am glad that, that we as a state have not adopted a Common Core. I think that Common Core was setting us up to fail, not to succeed as a state, simply because they were going too far, and, and they wasn't, they were not considering child development.
Mr. Young?
I do not support Common Core, just based on the, based on the premise of the fact that it's federal intrusion into our, our local program. We, we want to have local control of our schools, local as much as possible. I support high standards, but I don't want the federal government dictating to the state or what, what we need to do in our education program, and as much as I can, I'd like to keep our county as autonomous from the state as we possibly could, so that we have as much local control as possible. There is a concern, though. To my understanding, the state has repackaged some things where we have Common Core, but now it's called Florida Standards. So they pulled some things from Common Core and have made them Florida Standards, and they just recently opened up a portal for educators and so on to be able to interact with that portal, to start to get together the information that they need to begin to implement the standards that are now Florida Standards. So it's not, from what I've read and what I'm seeing, Common Core is not, it's not Common Core in, under the title Common Core, but Florida Standards has pulled from some of that information in order to say, okay, it's time to start bringing that in and having that be part of what we're doing. So now is the key time to say, let's look at how that's going to be enacted. Let's see how that's going to be implemented. Let's push back on what we need to push back. Let's shape what we need to shape, so that we can retain as much local control as possible over our, our own school districts.
Okay. Same question, Mr. Tyson?
Well, Common Core, obviously, is a huge burden on our community, and I'm glad to see my opponent, Mrs. Mills, has now changed her, her stance. On Tuesday afternoon, she supported the idea of Common Core. That's a quote. I guess last night when we went to a forum, some of the people in the audience may have, may have affected her decision, but I do appreciate you now standing against Common Core as it is a federal overreach. I don't think there's any politician or bureaucrat in Washington DC that can tell us in St. Lucie County how to best educate our children and the standards that they should be held to. We need, we do need high state standards, and I am all in favor of high state standards. With that being said, St. Lucie County needs a place at the table when those standards are being developed. We need someone from our county to represent us at the state level, from the education system, from the district at the state level, while these standards are being implemented or being talked about. I'm a, I'm a firm believer in local control of, of the curriculum and the textbook selection, but I am, I am 100% against the idea of Common Core and the federal over, overreach into our education system in the state and in St. Lucie County.
Okay. Next question starts with Mr. Young. What do you feel is the largest distraction from education in our school district? And if elected, how would you change it?
The largest distraction from education in our district is the endless barrage of standardized testing that comes, because it pulls away from instruction time. We need to assess and see where students are, but rather than constantly teaching for the test or teaching test-taking techniques and all those kinds of things, let's teach the curriculum, let's teach the, the basic skills, and then let the test assess where people are. Whenever we wind up in the situation where it's test after test after test, you just watch the lights go out in the students. I remember being, when I was a youth minister, working with kids, they would come in and whenever we knew it was FCAT time, and they're going to be releasing FCAT results, I think, for middle and high schools today. So when it was FCAT time, it was, wow, here they go, and they're just out. And it was testing and getting ready for the FCATs and all these things. And so the instructors are losing instructional time, the students are learning, are losing learning time, all for the sake of these standardized tests. And with, the FCAT is gone now, but guess what? A new test is coming. How, now is the time, now is the chance to say, how is this going to be implemented? Push back with the states, have those dialogues that need to be had on how is it going to be done, and how can we reserve more instructional time for our students rather than doing all this testing?
Mr. Tyson, largest distraction from education?
I think the largest distraction besides testing is the fact that we, we handcuff our teachers. The teachers no longer have the ability to go out there and do what they love to do. We hear daily that, or weekly at least, that their students or their teachers are leaving the teaching profession because they can no longer effectively inspire their children and the students of our county the way they thought they could when they originally became a teacher. We need to, and a part of that is, is going back to the testing. I think when teachers teach to a test that does their community and the students, a tremendous disservice. I think we need to get back to basics when it comes to reading, writing, arithmetic, and critical thinking skills. These teachers in the classroom understand the students best. Every student learns differently. As we, as a school board has been doing, and pushing down policy that restricts the teacher's ability to inspire children, that's when we see the decline in our school system. That's why in the past three years, three and a half years since my opponent's been elected, our school board has gone, or our school district has gone from a B district to a C district. Things like that, by empowering teachers, by allowing them the, the ability and the autonomy to inspire our students best and do what they do best, that, I believe, has been our biggest hindrance in the community, in our, in the school district.
Donna Mills, biggest distraction from education?
I'd like to answer that question, but before I do so, I just want to comment on the Common Core that my opponent said that I was agreeing with one day this week. I think he needs to go back to his notes, because what I did do was I mentioned what the Common Core was meant to do, but I also mentioned that I was not in support of the Common Core because it's not doing what it was meant to do. After having said that, I, I believe that, again, that the largest distraction for our teachers have been, not in our school district, have been these, the tests that we've had. Our teachers have been up under this pressure for these tests that are taking them, instead of being able to really work freely with their classroom, they're working toward passing a test. Now, we do need assessments. We do need tests. We do need to make sure that professionally, our, our teachers are up to par, and that comes through personal development. And when I say professional development, I mean where teachers can help each other, train each other, in-house professional development. So that can improve our situation and our teachers as well in the classroom. We need to- We need to make sure our teachers are held accountable. It's just that we need to work on something that's fair, and something that is going to be clear for our teachers to know what is expected out of them within the classroom.
Okay, thank you. Time now for closing statements. Let's begin with Mr. Tyson.
Again, thank you to the legal women voters for having this forum. Before I get into my closing statements, I just want to point out some interesting facts since my opponent's taken office. 2013, 48% of our students are not at grade-level reading. 49% are not at grade-level satisfactory when it comes to math, and 48% are not at satisfactory grade level when it comes to science. My plan of empowering principals and teachers creates an environment where students can actually learn, and we can have sustainable growth when it comes to student achievement. I've spoken with parents, I've spoken with administrators, and I've spoken with teachers. And while specific changes can redirect where we're going with the district, we need to keep the money in the decision-making closest to the students. It is obvious our top-down approach in education isn't working, and it's time we change this. The change we need is a change in leadership. It starts with changing the face of the school board. As your next school board member, I will truly stand up for every student, regardless of what city you live in, the color of your skin, and of what income level you come from. I will not only say every student every day, but I will live it, every student every day. The future of our school district can no longer wait, we need to make that change now. My name is Jeremy Tyson, I'm running for St. Lucie County School Board, District 3. I'd appreciate your support. For more information, you can go to my website, www.jt2014.com. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And now, closing statement, Donna Mills.
My opponent, Mr. Tyson, mentioned everything that I've done. I have been on the school board now since 2010, I am endorsed by the Teachers Union, I have stood for all of our employees, I have made sure that everyone has been treated fairly. Our teachers, when I first came on board, received, had not received four years of back pay, of steps. They now have all six of their steps. We're still working on these things, we are working to improve. I believe that our teachers are our frontline warriors, and that we really and truly need to make sure that they're well-cared-for, because they're the ones in the classroom. I know what it's like to be a teacher. I was a teacher for five years as a VPK teacher. I was the teacher of my VPK class. I have since closed my program, so that I can be more fully into the school district to implement the programs that I have started. You know, the first year is a learning curve year, but after that, I have put together programs that are working, that are improving our children's conduct and their motivation for learning. I am a 30-year public servant. I have done, proven myself as a leader, not only the 30 years that I've been in St. Lucie County, but since I have been a school board member. The teachers know it, the employees know it, the children know it, the parents know it. I have done what my opponent is saying he will do. Thank you.
Thank you. Closing statements, Mr. Young?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today, the opportunity to share this information, and for folks to get to know me as a candidate. I look forward to the day when the story's changed, when the story isn't, I had passion to become a teacher, and I worked hard to become a teacher, and whenever I came in, it wasn't everything I thought it was going to be. It was a very restrictive environment, and I wasn't paid the way I should have been paid as a professional, and then I wound up leaving into something else. I look forward to hearing stories after serving on the school board of, wow, this is a great, wonderful place to work, they treat me as a leader, they treat me as a professional, and that the staff just rave about working in the schools, and the students rave about their learning experiences, and the teachers are just happy, and it becomes one of the most, one of the greatest places to work in St. Lucie County. I look forward to hearing those stories, and as those stories are shared, then more teachers will come and come to our district and want to work as part of it. It all begins with change. Like I said at the beginning, I'm working to empower teachers, parents, and staff. I'm looking for financial transparency, working for that on the school board, and working for local control of our schools. You can find out more information about me at markyoung4slc.com, and I thank you for your vote. It would be an honor to serve you in yet another way in this county. Thank you.
We want to thank all of you for being here today, Jeremy Tyson, Mark Young, and Donna Mills, and certainly thank you, and we thank all of our viewers for, and listeners for informing themselves before the August 26th primary. We have more races to go.